Morning meeting. First item on the agenda, let me first get this to the agenda. Is the approval of the minutes from January 27th. Have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, amendments? All right, all in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
All right, great. Passes. Okay, next on the agenda, first select moment updates. Just wanted real quickly, obviously we had our town meeting on January 27th and I think it was a fair attendance, we always would like to see more people, but we probably had 60 in the crowd and where I just reviewed kind of more background information about the town and just trying to inform the public a little bit more about town government and lay some groundwork for some of the initiatives that are going to be happening this year. I also launched a monthly coffee and conversation that we, I'm going to be holding once a month at the Senior Center and having, inviting members of the public to join. And it was meant to be more of an office hours kind of thing, so rather than setting a formal appointment, you know, the community members could come in and ask questions and and interestingly it turned into a little bit more of a round table where we probably had 15 people in attendance and we discussed just a range of issues of public concern. Interestingly, the Ethics Commission came up as a very important priority for several people that attended. We talked about Island Avenue, economic development and a number of the topics there and I tried to answer questions as best I could. We're going to post the final schedule, I'm going to stagger it, it's going to be in the mornings every other month and then in the evenings from I think 4:30 to 6:00, is that it?
4:30 to 6:00.
Yeah, so at the Senior Center, so those people who cannot make the morning meeting, perhaps they could try to make the late afternoon one. So a schedule will go out hopefully and then we'll be inviting members of the Board of Selectmen to join as well. I was joined by Scott Murphy this time and Al Goldberg joined later in the session, so I think it's productive and it's helpful just to hear directly from the public in an informal environment. I attended the Kirma Annual Meeting and it was nice that the Town of Madison was awarded a prize for excellence in risk management, so kudos to Lauren, who was our Risk Manager here and Lauren, you wanted to say a few words about the award and what it's about?
Sure. So Kirma every year gives out four Risk Management Excellence Awards and they're in different categories. The Town of Madison received an award this year for establishing risk as a town priority. Over the last five years since I've been here, we have shifted risk from one department to me. That was my area of expertise before I started working here, I was an insurance administrator for a property management company. So when I came in and I saw that there weren't a lot of risk controls, that's something that we started working on internally. And between myself and HR on the town side and HR on the Board of Ed side, we've worked to create programs that we're hoping are changing the culture of risk, getting people and employees to understand what risk is, identify possible risks and then address them in a timely manner. So with all of that, we have new policies, new trainings that we've done over the last five years and I gave all of that to Kirma and said, here's where I think the town has really established this as a priority, Kirma agreed and we got the award.
Great, so it was nice, there was a video about what Madison's accomplished, there's only four towns recognized and I think there was a cash award?
Yeah, $2,500. They grant $2,500 to each of their recipients, so that is going to go into an account where we can start funding some of those safety concerns that come up with our internal safety committee.
Great, great, well thank you for that and it was nice to see to see that happen. In addition, I've been trying to squeeze in some community center tours just to get a better understanding of how other towns have approached the community center concept. And I went up to West Hartford Elmwood and then also Branford had a community center and they refurbished and it's absolutely beautiful, we toured that last week, Jimmy Cosgrove gave us a personal tour. So it was just interesting to see how, what they had done to their building, what activities were involved and so it was really helpful, I think, for many of us to just see how that, those centers operated. In terms of just, you know, other things going on, I thought it would be important to highlight that I've been spending a lot of time just digging in and digging around and trying to understand different issues that either other boards have brought to my attention or members of the public have brought to my attention. I've had an ongoing parade frankly of people coming into my office making requests and these are, some of these are initiatives that had been maybe started under the previous administration but not followed through on or maybe not supported at the time and so I think a lot of people wanted to kind of make a case now about launching, supporting or just some of these are just need to be having the loop closed on them. So it's a lengthy list and that's not even all inclusive, but I can, I think pretty much everything on there I've had at least one meeting or discussion or request about. And then obviously some of those have involved an incredible amount of discussion and research. So I'm trying to cross things off the list, I'm trying to make decisions, but I think it takes time for me to understand and then prioritize before I make a decision to move something forward or whether or not I bring it to this board. So I just wanted to highlight some of the different things going on that are have been, you know, maybe talked about for many years in town and that people are kind of eager to see resolution on in one way or another. And it's a long list, so I'm doing my best and we'll continue to keep the public informed about where we stand on a lot of these things. So that concludes my update for today and wanted to move on to any liaison reports or selectman comments? Any liaison reports?
Give a quick beach and rec update, I attended their last meeting where substantially all of their time was around the upcoming summer season, staffing strategies, beach pass, ease of purchase strategies. We all know that they moved to back to the sticker system, so they're now working out the details on re-implementing that process. They are also through the Salt Meadow Committee working, moving forward with the state on exploring the kayak launch at the end of Cottage Road. So we can expect to hear progress on that soon. And then their lifeguard staffing strategy. And I'm not going to say too much more because Scott is here and he's going to give us an update on all of that, so we'll wait for his update.
Great, great, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a quick one. So just two things, one with the library, the Scranton Friends Book Drive, I think some of you may know about that and have seen that on social media, but that starts on March 1st. The drop off is at 114A Bradley Road, so if you have used books, bring them down to Bradley Road. And then there is a State of the Youth which our Madison Youth and Family Team and May Team is going to be presenting, we may actually be hearing about it later today also. But that's on 2/20 at the Senior Center Cafe at 6:30 PM. So that's a great session, hope everybody can attend.
Anything else to move on or? Okay, citizens' comments, any citizens' comments here today? There'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting also if people want to chime in then, so. All right, so let's move on to item six, which is the Discuss and Take Action to Approve Project So Grow Savor: An Intergenerational Edible Gardening Program at the Madison Senior Center. This is something that we had talked about at our last meeting, about the benefits of the program and we have Austin here today, great, Austin, if you'd like to just highlight real quickly, but I really to
I'll move, I'll move the motion?
You just want to move it?
I'll second.
All right, okay, discussion? Trying to think, are there any questions for Austin because you reviewed this at our last meeting and we've had materials to review, I think now we're just basically allowing the project to go forward? So there's no more questions?
Remind me costs, do we have costs?
No costs to the town.
No costs to the town?
Yeah, it's a grant funded project through
Yukon.
Yukon, so.
Awesome.
All right, all in favor of approving the project?
Aye.
Okay, great, all right, Austin, great.
Thank you.
Look forward to tasting some of the fruits of the garden. Okay, great. Next, next item is review potential referendum timeline with bond counsel, so we have Dave Pitney here, oh great, thank you. Welcome, and what I've done is, this is just a follow-up conversation that we had two meetings ago about, you know, we have these two large referendum projects and how we would kind of lay these out and what the timeline would look like this year and all the different hurdles that our board and other boards need to go through to take something to referendum. And I think we agreed we wanted to have more discussion about this, so this slide is what I showed last week and really this is just highlighting what all these different issues are, we talked about the slide also during two meetings ago. But I thought it would be helpful more to have a more specific discussion, which unfortunately I was not able to get this timeline that you emailed on the slide. So the public is not able to see it, but I did send it around, this is the one I got Friday from you? And basically it lays out different action items and when I spoke to bond counsel, we talked about, you know, something happening in the fall, what that timeline would look at like, either having it something separate and standalone or having it on the ballot at the general election on November 11th. And so they kind of went back and put together a more specific timeline for us. So I don't know if you want to walk through?
Yeah, I want to just give you these.
And I can go back to this if this is helpful?
I'll forward those to you as well to make those available. I can be sometimes more of a visual person, so I figured this true, could we ask you to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
My name is Glenn Rybacki, I work with Dave Pitney, we have served as bond counsel to the town and that's our job.
Great, thank you.
So the way, when we discussed the two different plans, there's, your, the Town of Madison is a, it's a charter town, but also state statute plays into it as far as the timing requirements, who has to do what in the course of the process. And the concerns were either if we went out to the November election or if we wanted to do another, I kind of talked, a parallel sort of standalone referendum and what would need to occur. Basically what would need to occur is that the Board of Selectmen are going to, would opt, would take a look at the resolution, look at the project, recommend it, pass it over to the Board of Finance. Board of Finance would do the same thing and being appropriation is to be approved by the Board of Finance. And then what it would do is go to a town meeting, which would be adjourned to a referendum. That's so that everybody gets a chance to vote on that. Now with, what I did do and like I said, I made this kind of more of a visual, is that from a calendar standpoint, Board of Selectmen can do a lot of the preliminary stuff in May for both on either path that it takes. That would be, you know, adopting an intent that you're going to have a referendum and that you would report it, because one of the key elements for a school project is getting grants and getting them from the state and the state has certain deadlines that you have to meet with that. Basically, I think it's June 30th, they need to have the grant applications in by, so there's certain actions that you might have to take before then if you want that. So that would be, like I said, an intent for referendum and a report to the Board of Ed or actually I think it's Department of Administrative Services now by November 15th. Either if you have a standing building committee, you can establish a building committee for it. You can authorize the preparation of schematics, plans, drawings, whichever. But probably more important of that whole batch is authorize the Board of Ed to file for and accept grants for the town. And that's what would be passed through to the Department of Administrative Services.
So I'm sorry, the, just real quickly, so this is by November 15th, the, I'm a little confused by this, standalone referendum, May 11th and I, this is taking a minute to absorb what you have here. You're saying the intent for the referendum report by November 15th, that is due to who?
That is due to the state.
Okay, in order to be
The grant administrator.
And that it would be to require, if we were applying for obviously state reimbursement?
Yes.
Okay, so if we apply by June 30th, the intent or report, okay.
Right, because before, in the past, the way it used to be was you used to have to have everything done. That was from Board of Selectmen action to referendum approval to all this being in place before you even applied for the grants.
Right.
What they've done is they've opened that up where you can take certain actions upfront, say that you've got an intent to have the referendum and that you will report the results. But that's been a method that they've allowed to happen that at least lets you do things at a more calm pace if you will, rather than either a rush or do it towards the end and then you've got to wait another cycle for grants.
Right, right, okay, okay, thank you.
And so basically what I ended up doing on this paper that I will send you to file so you can make it available, is to be on the November referendum, actions have to be taken before the beginning of September because of, and that's Secretary of State's rules. So what I had laid out was in August, what would happen is is the Board of Selectmen would meet, they'd recommend the appropriation, they'd also refer to planning and zoning for an 824 approval, which is to the state requirement that all municipal projects have to comply with the town's plan to have in place.
And this is basically you have to have it happen by then? It's not like you could do some of this in July or June or whatever?
Not, not for purposes of meeting the election, no. You're going to have to, so yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you have to have these done, oh, not by June, I'm sorry, you have to have these done in August before September. When we're talking the election, think of that the, probably the more important deadline is the first week in September.
Okay.
And that's why we have all these actions taking place in August where the Board of Selectmen meet, Board of Finance meet, Planning and Zoning meets and then Board of Selectmen use one more time to set the town meeting and the referendum date.
And I didn't realize planning and zoning would have to
Planning and zoning might have to, and the reason why I say might have to is 824 in the statute says that before the town can spend any money, they have to have an 824 review if it adds like a new building, if you do additions, if you do substantial improvements. That's kind of a, it's kind of a mushy sort of standard, but I had put that in there because it's something that's probably, I don't know, it's, I'd rather have it done and you do it and it's, you know, why have somebody argue against it later on where they might say, hey, you know, we added this or we've substantially improved the building? You know, you may think substantial might be one thing, I may think it's another, you know.
Right, right. But it sounds like, I mean, based on what the plan currently is in place, it would probably be required, so.
Nope, you go.
Because there's substantial changes, we're demolishing a building, we're building a new building, right? So.
Glenn, before you go any further in our calendar, you have here in red ink, stand out for us, you have the words advocacy limitations.
Yes.
And we all get confused about this.
Fire away. This is under state election laws, once a referendum is set, town money cannot be spent to advocate a for or against position. Now, we think of that as, I don't know, the clear cut would be you print up a flyer, send it out and it says vote for the school project, that you clearly couldn't do. Where it really becomes kind of tricky and what you've got to watch for is that you're allowed to produce explanatory text, which explains what the project's going to be, what the impact on the town is, what the, what, you know, what the project is.
So sharing of facts.
Exactly. What you can't do is kind of say, well, we're doing this and if you don't vote for it, well, we're going to have a mill rate hit, we're going to have this happen, property values are going to go, you, you've got to be really careful. So what it does do is it's, it's that spending the money sort of thing and putting out, it does not stop you here in this body from discussing it. So you can always discuss a project, you can say if you're for or against it, you can say, you know, this should be better, this should be worse, whatever. You can do that in your political sense, if you will. What you can't do is turn to the voters outside of this and act like an active advocate for one side or the other. And I put that out there because the State Elections Enforcement Committee has kind of a squishy idea what advocacy is. Sometimes you think you're just saying, if we do it, they'll save on the mill rate. They may see that as kind of pushing people to do something if they don't want to do it, so.
Glenn, does this prescription apply just to elected officials? Does it apply to appointed officials in town government?
It's based on, if you want to say, money spent by the town, so it could be. Good example might be is let's say you were doing something with fire departments and maybe, let's just say you had a volunteer fire department, you know, for a particular area and you wanted to redo stations. They're not getting paid, you own the facility, they use it. They put a sign up front that says, what do you call it there, you know, vote for the project. They take it out of their budget. Let's say you contribute to their budget as the town, you know, you give them an allowance or something. They're going to see that as town money spent even though there's a person that's a volunteer fireman and you say, what does he have to do with government or not? So it can be rather a reach sometimes, but if the elections people come to it, you know, it can really upset the apple cart.
Does this, does this apply to the district as well, the school district?
When you say district, the
So the school district gets a block of money from the town to fund its operations by state statute, what they do with that money is largely out of the control of the town. Are they governed by this same advocacy limitation?
They would be, yes.
Okay.
And I guess I'm, so if prior to this date, there are presentations made to this board or by this board that talks about pros and cons of a referendum, a project, would those have to be removed from the website? Because we take all our materials, we put them on the website, I mean, these are things that were presented in the past.
Generally, if it's done in the context of this body acting in its capacity as a body, your minutes can go up. If you attach to your agenda, I don't know, say the engineer's study or something or maybe even a financial viability study, because that can be a pro or a con, you can certainly do all of that. You can certainly talk pro or con in that, in your environment here. So you can really advocate all you want in this body, it's not meant to squelch that. It's, it's when you take it out of this body and, you know, say if you put signs out for something
Right, right.
type of thing.
But if an organization comes in and advocates for, in our meeting, advocates for maybe pro
Yes.
whatever it is, community center or something, are we allowed to post information specifically about what they bring to the meeting?
You can put in, and I would review this with the town's attorney because that, the attorney should be very well versed on this. Generally, yes, because it's being done in the context of political discussion.
Sure.
You know, your body again acting the way you should be. You know, on the other side of the coin, it's out of, I don't know, say outside of this, say one of you find, oh, I think this is really spot on and somebody should see this. Can just say, post it to the website, that might be a problem. Because now it's no longer kind of, if you want to think of it as protected political speech, now it's, it's something different.
Does the State Elections Commission put out any kind of guidelines on this topic?
What they'll do is they will, they will review anything that you may want to put out. They have a commission that they, you know, they will look at explanatory text, they'll look at any materials, mailers, anything that you may want to put out. And then they will give you, I guess, the thumbs up or the thumbs down with regards to it. It's usually a good idea when you're, if you're to produce explanatory text before the referendum, we usually, you know, will ask that you give it to us and we know people over there, not that it pulls any strings or not, but hopefully get yours looked at and passed on, you know, or get feedback and, you know, you might get it where it might say, oh, the second, everything's good but the second paragraph on the third page, that doesn't look right to us. And then we can work with you and make sure that you have what's out there is right and that they've given it their blessing.
Glenn, can we, as individuals outside of this meeting, be advocates for or against?
Generally, the idea is you probably could. I would run it by the commission before depending on how, I mean, you certainly could be, let's say at the coffee shop and, you know, I don't know, maybe you hold meetings or whatever just so that the public can come and talk to you about matters. That you certainly could. You know, again, it's, I don't think you'd be expending any town money in that instance, but I'd be, you know, I guess, I think the answer is generally yes, but I think I would double check it. That's why I made that red.
Sorry for the people.
No, but that's why I made that red to stand out, because that's a sticky area and, you know, you just don't want to create a problem if there isn't a problem.
Well, I think it's also important that as these two, you know, some important projects move forward, people understand that there's a point where the town can't, has to kind of just let the community vet what the project is, right?
Yes.
And so I think it's important to understand that timeframe and it sounds as if, you know, whether we do it, if you do it as a standalone referendum, you actually have a little bit more time in September and let's be honest, part of this has to do with the fact that the summer is a horrible time to get the community engaged in projects, right?
Particularly school projects.
So particularly school projects, so, you know, it does create some concerns about making sure that the community is engaged and fully informed when they go to vote. And so in the, unfortunately because of the state timeline, the November referendum date actually means that we would have basically until the end of August to reach out to the school community.
That is correct.
Not that we can't reach out, but we, you know, you just, it's a more limited way of communicating, right? Whereas if we were to do it as a standalone referendum, there is an opportunity at least of a couple of weeks, it sounds like, here mid-September.
And that was when we used an October 6th referendum date, so if you wanted to move that, you could almost think of that whole block pretty much staying intact like that, moving
Forward or backwards.
Exactly.
Whatever.
And one other point that we could do is in that sort of scenario, we can split up the Board of Selectmen function where you see on mine, the beginning there recommending the appropriation. You can recommend it to send it over to the Board of Finance and then meet a second time to set the town meeting and the referendum. It, it's only going to add about a week or two to things, but if you felt like you needed it, it certainly can be done.
Do we have a similar timeline with milestones for Academy?
Well, this is basically, yeah, anything, it just, he refers to Board of Education in there, but it's the same thing that was Academy.
Because one's a standalone, one's a combined, I think.
And that has, that's the one that creates the, again, that those, that May piece at the top there where we're saying the intent to have a referendum and report it, that's for the state grant provisions.
Right, we're imagining grant applications for Academy as well, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, fair, fair, but it's a different process, I think, for those grant applications and they're usually, I don't know actually the specific timeline for those types of grants, but you know, Academy from what we have been told by the Board of Finance, they're going to be on the same ballot, so I can't imagine, but it's a good point, we have to clarify, if those state, if the Academy grant applications have a timeline that would be more restrictive than the schools, that might change this as well, so that's a question.
We can certainly look into that.
Yeah, yeah, there's some specific grants that they have identified they might be interested in pursuing, but it's a good point. I seem to remember that they were, they had, the town had to vote before we could, for, in the instance of Academy, which seems different from this, the town would have to vote and approve the project before they could apply the grants, just different. Do you know anything about that?
That I don't, off the top.
Like historic grants and
The one I was speaking of was, that's exactly the way the state Board of Education grants used to be.
Used to be, okay.
And that's what this is kind of reflective of their, if you want to say, loosening up
Right.
the reins a little bit.
But Peggy, just to your, you made an interesting point there, so let's just say for sake of argument that the for sake of argument that the school facilities referendum is ready to go. Do we have an option still to do that as a standalone in May? I mean, do we have to, are we bound to couple them at this point? I know the Board of Finance has sort of signaled to us, but we, as the Board of Selectmen, I think, have an opportunity either way, right? We don't have to tie them together.
Well, I think that that's something that we would have to discuss with the Board of Finance. The message that I have been told publicly, and they've said in the paper and everything else, is that they would not support something separate. Now, maybe with an informed discussion about timelines and deadlines and all this other stuff, and the complexity of this, we could always bring that topic up again with them. So I think what we don't want to have, I think we want to be in sync with them right now, right?
Yeah, and maximize voter turnout, for sure.
Yeah, exactly. So, but it's a, it's a, I think, important thing that we need to continue to talk to the Board of Finance about their thoughts on this, because I don't think they've had this discussion yet on timeline. I've spoken to the chair about it, but I don't think as a board they've had a formal review of the timeline.
Yeah, Scott, I think the, maybe the operating principle here is that we are laying out for the taxpayers all of our anticipated spending, so that as, as we ask for a vote on one item, we have complete visibility and transparency to what's, what's coming, right? This is what we're going to be asking for next, and when, because these two topics are substantially ready to go, right? There's been decades of talk about schools at this point, and I think we have a pretty crisp understanding of what the community is asking for out of Academy that just makes sense to, to join them together. But, but the overriding principle is...
I think that's open to debate. I'm not sure I 100% agree or know if we should or not. I think it somewhat depends on whether or not one is ready before the other, too.
Well, and I think also that, you know, that's what the CIP plans for now, right? Because now we're including referendum projects in CIP. So CIP, the timeline, is a planning tool, and those referendums are in there now. I mean, this is a different discussion. This is about when do we feel it's the best time to have the public weigh in on those projects. So, and it's, it's complex, because they're two very different types of projects. They have different funding, they have different, you know, purposes in town. But at the same point, I do think that there seems to be, you know, a general view in the public that it makes sense to have them on the same ballot. So it's, it's complicated, and we have not, the Board of Finance hasn't really looked at it, I don't think, from a, you know, process standpoint now. So, and perhaps that's something they should do in their next meeting, so we can talk more fully about this. We've been under, I've been operating under the premise that these two have to go simultaneously forward in order to be brought forward to the public.
So do we need to have the, this same thing for Academy and be looking at it side by side, do you think?
I, I think, as an exercise to dot the i's and cross the t's, it's right. I, I don't expect any surprises out of that kind of timeline, but it's probably better to discover that now than...
Yeah, makes sense. I think that makes sense, and if, you know, just to look at specifically the list of grants and if there's any other kind of things. I think, to your point, that's what I recall hearing as well, that it was more after the fact.
I don't know if that's true, although of them?
Yeah. But it's worth, you know, like you said, making sure we're thorough.
They both, if I may just say, they both can follow the same path, but they both can take different paths to get to the same point. That's, that's your judgment. I think also, too, is the grants are going to, you know, if there's grant timelines, much like the way a traditional school project works, you know, that's outside your control, and you almost have to react to that. Maybe, you know, like I said, we'll find out what goes with the Academy project and see if there's any other, if there's constraints, and it may be that they, and, you know, maybe it makes sense to move both of them together when that, if that's the case, or however you feel, because, you know, you certainly want to make sure your voters have the information and...
Well, and I think one thing, too, I want to mention, because I asked Council this just so I had an absolute understanding of it, because I've gotten questions from the public about, would this be one question or two questions if they were on the ballot together? And my understanding, because they are very different types of projects, they have to be separate questions. So that is something that was at least in our discussion with Doug, that it was, you know, pretty clear, unless they were tied together in some way. Because we did have, when the senior center and the ambulance center was one question, right? But that was involving property that was related to each other, so it was tied together in that, in that way.
Yeah, you just have to think that there's a reasonable connection that, you know, somebody who was just looking at it for the first time could say, oh, I see why these go together, as opposed to, you know, say, a DPW building and a school building.
Any other questions on this?
Final question from me, Glenn. The public is often amazed at the final question, the way it's actually worded on a referendum. It's hugely incredibly dense and complex, and over the years, I've had people ask me, can't you just ask it simply? Could you explain to the public why? You're the author of the actual language, is that correct?
Yes, and we are rotten people, not the person who's listening with that. Basically, what we do is, it's, we try to make the question, and we do try, believe it or not, we do try to shrink it down and make it as simple, but what you're asking the people to do is, one, be able to identify what the project is and a fair amount of what the, what's going to be done. You, you don't want to say just the school project, it may be the school addition and the roof or something. So you may have identification, Glenn, we'll just call it to that. You also have to make sure that the voters know that you're asking them to approve an appropriation, the ability to spend the money, and you're also asking them for an ability to borrow, to, to obtain funds for that spending. So those are kind of the three elements that have to be in there. I admit, the wording is never very graceful, but that's kind of what it's meant to do, and that's why a lot of times, like with explanatory text, towns will look at and go, that legal stuff, nobody wants to really parse through. It's easier for us to say, if you want the project to go forward and all that, you would vote yes, and if you don't, you are going to vote no, even if, whether you're not, you can understand the question as it's written.
Well, and also, I think the other thing to understand is that the town is authorizing a dollar amount in aggregate, but how the actual financing is implemented is actually something that the town chooses to do with the finance director. So it's not like there's just a big checkbook and you just write out, you know, $85 million. There's a whole sequence thing of events. We try to optimize timing as the funds are needed. And that was the case with the library. I've had the pleasure of approving some of those fund deliveries in the millions of dollar level, but that would be how this would be. So if, even with two projects, you know, Stacy's team has worked hard to look at how those cash flows would look out and what the appropriate kind of finance would be on an interim basis as the projects are being undertaken and completed.
And I think a good parallel would be is that you, as the Board of Selectmen, have a, you know, you'll be asked to vote on something, and it's usually, do you want this? So it's a, there's a, there is a question in there. Do you want this to go forward, yes or no? The referendum, which by extension is the adjourned town meeting, that's the legislative body of the town, so they've got to answer a question, too, so.
Do we have any role in the wording of the question? Like you said, you draft it?
Yeah, we'll draft.
Do we approve it, or do we? Okay.
Yeah, we put it together and make sure that it crosses all the barriers it's supposed to cross so that it's valid. You certainly, we always run it by, by everybody here, because the, the point being that sometimes, you know, you want to make sure we covered the entire project. You know, you want to make sure our wording, and maybe something's happened between the last time we spoke, and then, certain language, I will admit, is boilerplate sort of, like in one instance, there's the declaration of official intent, that's, that's IRS language, and it, it is very confusing to the average person, but it has to be that way. But we certainly would, you know, work with you to try to make it something, hopefully, more understandable.
Should we vote on that, do you?
I think we'll, on the actual language, I would think, no, the question, we vote on the question, right? So...
You'll vote on the question, but you'll have the, you'll have what the resolution will be. And, and so what you're going to do is, in essence, recommend that that appropriation, bond authorization, as embodied by that resolution, gets put first to the Board of Finance and then to the, to the town voters.
Okay.
I think, I think the thing that's coming to mind for me as I'm thinking about this for, certainly, I mean, Katie's here from the Board of Ed, but we owe, I think, the Board of Ed an opportunity to start planning for a referendum as well. I mean, they've got work to do on their end in order to start communicating and to kind of get the word on the street. So I think, you know, we've obviously got to, you know, start targeting a date, I think, at some point. I'm not sure ultimately when we have to vote on the date. That's, I think, something that we have to agree upon here, but, you know, I think we may want to be thinking about that in collaboration with the Board of Ed for sure, and then obviously the Academy folks as well, to get the word out, as we were talking about with the advocacy, so. We're kind of holding the Board of Ed up at this point. Do you want to say something, Katie?
Well, I just want, there is a difference between actually formally setting the date and, and setting the date. So just having, I mean, I don't think that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Board of Ed recently got an eight-page opinion from, about the quiet period, too, so I'm, I'm happy to share that. It was super helpful and right in line with what we heard this morning. But I think having a target would be helpful, not only for the Board of Ed, but I'm sure for Academy, too, so that we can begin planning. And then when you take action on it, it sounds like it's August or September, depending on whether it's September or November referendum. But just having a sense of where we're moving towards, I think, would be helpful, certainly in my book.
Understood.
I have one more, I'm sorry. Glenn, you work with many communities across the state. Do you have any pros and cons of whether putting a referendum on, at a general election is a good idea? What if, have other communities learned anything you can share with us?
It really is how you judge the, your, your community. Some towns, you get very little turnout at a standalone, whereas more people come out at an election. You'll also get the viewpoint that at an election, everybody's concerned about whether they're voting for, you know, whether it's governor, president, whichever, and questions can get lost. You know, there's a cost element, it's about $3,500 to about $5,000 to run a referendum, you know, for whatever that's worth. Sometimes that can, you know, taint people's like or dislike of something. You know, I don't think there's a different, it's all a matter of how much information that you put out there ahead of it, and, you know, if they, I find that both, either works the same, it's all a matter of how much people know about what the projects are, and then they come out. But I don't, I don't think you, again, you, you know your town better than I can ever try to summarize, but that's, that's kind of a judgment you would have to make and see what the tenor is. You know, I, the one thing I will say is, we were talking about September versus then August, say, school projects, school projects in other towns. People in the summertime are thinking about whether they're going to go to the beach, whether they're going to, you know, I don't know, go down to, you know, Lenny and Joe's and, and have a lobster roll or not type of thing. They're, they're not thinking in terms of, boy, I hope my school needs a new roof, much less do they want to come out. So a lot of times, matching project to the timing, to the people who, who are concerned about it, sometimes it's even, even the weather, but you can't even, you know, play for that. It's, it's, you kind of got to, again, it's whatever, it's sometimes, it's one of those gut feelings sort of things, I think. Thank you.
And I think it would be important for, because I don't think there is any right answer, right? And I think that's where each of the boards, you know, including Katie, your boards, to think about what...
Ready now.
You know?
Ready now.
Yeah, no, I mean, preferences in terms of timing and all that, so, but I agree that we need to kind of have some direct guidance of our views sooner rather than later. Obviously, not today, but maybe in the next couple of meetings here, about what our thoughts are, our final thoughts are, without taking action, but just more having a, you know, preference.
But I would think that having these, these referendum questions in our highest turnout voting cycle would just be a self-evidently good thing to do. The more voters that show up, the, the more clear the results are. We talk a lot about engaging the community in these big decisions. I can't think of a better opportunity to do that than the presidential election, where we're going to get the highest turnout that we've had, and certainly in the last four years, if not the last 40 years.
I, I absolutely agree, and my gut response was, the more voters, the better. I think the only hiccup is if you look at the timeline that does not allow any kind of communication with the school committee at the beginning of the school year. So that's the one thing where I look at that, and I'm like, okay, now there's no ability to really talk to people if they come back from, any of the new people enrolled who perhaps have never paid attention to any of this, and now they got a kindergartner, or they just moved into town, they're starting school the first week of September. So I'm just saying, in terms of the advocacy piece, but I think this is an important discussion that to be had, and I agree, because that was my initial thought reaction, too. It's more about the ability to communicate directly with the community, and what limitations there might be with that timeline, this, the November timeline. It's really because the state has a much more restrictive...
And it doesn't, you're putting information out, it just prevents you from putting a spin on it, if you will, and that's a bad word, and I, that's not the right word, it's, but you can't put, you know, a nuance to it. It's got to be very, very bummed, but you can still put information out, you can still hold information sessions, you can still have, say, when, when this board meets, have presentations done. I mean, you still, you're still able to communicate and educate and such. You've just got to watch out for the nuances.
But the Board of Education could begin their public awareness campaign today.
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right? And say, we, we are moving forward towards an expected referendum, and so the, the public input, the public education component of the school year starts, it could start virtually today.
You all could be doing, if you wanted to go say, gee, I'm really thinking we need some schoolwork done, and be talking about it if you want. You know, it's certainly, you know, think of it as, the freedom's out to here, it comes in a little tighter, maybe it comes in a little tighter after that, but you're, you know, you still, nothing's holding you, you know, holding you back at this point.
Regardless of September or November.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's why on that sheet I brought up, and I'll, like I said, I'll send that file over to y'all. That's why I put the red out there. I just wanted you to know that that's when you got to really start thinking about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. All right, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity of your exhibits.
Yeah. All right, next is item eight. Discuss and take action to approve the Charge of the Solid Waste Disposal Committee. My apologies, I forgot to put that on the slide. But the charge, basically, just for the public's benefit, is, this is dealing with the Guilford-Madison Transfer Station. We spoke briefly about this. Actually, should we have a motion to approve and then discuss?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, great. Okay, discussion. So the charge is, working with the Town of Guilford Waste Transfer Station Advisory Committee members, this committee shall advise the Board of Selectmen on the transfer station or report quarterly to the State of Connecticut on waste volumes, evaluate the current operating model of the transportation, and make recommendations for changes if needed, assist in the establishment of capital project budget. The committee shall consist of six members, three members from the Town of Guilford and three members of the Town of Madison, serving the term, for terms of three years. So just to remind you, this is a committee that exists already, but has not been populated for many years, and the first Selectmen of Guilford approached me because there's some now issues and decisions that have to be made about how the, they, they're in charge of the operations of this, and that they feel we need to repopulate the board so we can make the decisions going forward. And so I think Lauren took the old charge, and just, we just made a few modifications to it, right?
So I, I created a charge, there was no old charge.
Oh, there was a charge, okay.
There was just an outline of, here are some things that are kind of rules for this committee. So this is a relatively new charge, but it's based on the language of the agreement from 1983 between the Town of Madison and the Town of Guilford, for what each town is responsible for, for the oversight of, of this site. The only change that I made, so this is on the slides from the January 27th meeting. The only change that we made between January 27th and today is that second bullet point, I clarified where they will be reporting to. So instead of just saying, report on waste volumes, it now says, report quarterly to the State of Connecticut. And that's based on DEEP standards.
Okay, so... Okay, so, so I think this is just to get it going, we'll have to then recruit members, three members to it, and then they'll kind of end up coming back and reporting to us, you know, I think, what the different issues are for the transfer station going forward, so.
Peggy, I would want to make sure, if we haven't already done so, that the charge we're giving our three representatives is the same charge that Guilford is giving its three representatives.
So, I did actually reach out to them perp before I did any work on this, to see what their charge said, and they also do not have a charge. So, they're kind of waiting for us to approve our charge, and then I will send it over to them, and they're going to establish the same charge.
Good, thank you.
As long as they don't go wrong on us.
Yeah, which in that case, I'll take it back to you and say, we need to change a bunch of stuff.
Right.
And this is like, it's the agreement, which I think you guys got copied, it's the agreement at our last meeting.
Yep.
This is based on that already, so, so I guess we already motioned for it to approve, right? So all in favor of the Solid Waste Disposal Committee charge?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, charge is approved, and we'll see how it goes. And obviously, for members of the public, if you're interested in serving, we'll send out a blast this week on this committee. I know there was one person at the last meeting who was raising their hand, which was wonderful, so hopefully we'll get some applicants, and we'll, we'll see how to manage it going. So, all right, so the, number nine, and I know we're running late as usual, not late, but just lengthy, because we like to talk. I won't go through every slide here, but I just wanted to update the public on what we're doing communications-wise. So we have a kind of working group that consists of Art Sickle, Lauren, and Rita, and then Scott Murphy and myself, just to approach communications, because this was something, I think, that came up a lot, where people wanted to have a better communications experience with the town, and so we just wanted to look and improve things a little bit, refine it, and put some policies around it. And so we're in the process of doing that, and this just lays out what our process is, which basically starts out with setting our goals, and identifying stakeholders, and then moving through and creating priorities, messaging, and identifying how we're going to reach out to the public. And so this will be available on the website, and, and like I said, this is kind of a working process that we're working towards, and our team is working towards. And goals, this is a lot of words, but these were kind of some of the goals that, as the team talked through, you know, what our goal is in terms of the public, and also what we want to do internally. So the town internally also wants to make more of a formal communications, kind of policies and procedures. And unfortunately, we don't have a communications person, so this ends up falling on multiple people's shoulders, and I know the technology team has had to really bear a lot of that, because so much of communicating with the public now relies on technology, website, email, social media, so, but, you know, it's, ideally, it would be nice to have somebody actually responsible for the content. And right now, they're really collectors of content, and pushing out the content, but they're not driving the content. So driving the content is coming from different town departments. And so this shows kind of who our stakeholders are, and this was just a brainstorming session about who, who cares about our, who wants stuff from the town, and what, you know, who is invested in our town, and it, and it's a range of people, and different people have different interests and priorities about what they're looking for from the town. And then, this is a very hard slide to see, so you can look at it later, but basically, what we started to map out was, there's a lot that the town already does, it, and there's multiple channels of the way we reach people, whether that's through social media, whether that's through emails, robo-calls, through Madison Public Television that does our meetings, and then there's all these different things that we push out to the town. So what we're trying to do is really make this more effective and clear, so people get what they need, and streamline it in some ways, and simplify it. So, like I said, this is kind of work and process, and, but just trying to identify all these different channels, and what information is going through those channels. And then we're trying to find, we need to figure out how effective they are, so that we can come up with a plan. So, just to, real quickly, we've started some newer initiatives right away, and one of those is the coffee and conversation things, of a way to people to interact more with the Board of Selectmen in a more informal way. We're trying to ramp up social media a little bit more, so that people have direct links to the agendas, to the minutes, and all that stuff, rather than having to kind of, it's more of a push strategy, rather than a passive strategy. Also, you know, just the overhead presentations here, so that I'm trying to put as much that we talk about in our board meetings on overhead slides, so that later, after our meetings, the public has the opportunity to, you know, see what we talked about. And then, you know, we're looking at, you know, constituency feedback, there's actually apps out there that the town could possibly invest in, and I think we're not quite ready at that point, but that might be a longer-term decision that we make, so that people have a way to directly connect with the town. The school's already done that, if you have children in schools, there's a Madison Public School app now that gives information to people, so we're kind of seeing how that works, and that might be something longer-term we might want to use from the town. And then live streaming, which I think we're going to be testing here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll announce the formal date that Madison Public Television decide, or Cable Access Channel, not Madison Public Television, sorry, Madison Cable Access Channel, you know, we'll, we'll hopefully get a, a hard date that, for our next Board of Selectmen meeting, possibly, or the one after that. They want to do a test first, before we actually launch the live streaming, but we have the equipment now, and they've selected YouTube as the, as the format on which they're going to do that. So, so these are just some of the initiatives, and then, you know, I will continue to update the public on how the plan evolves and develops. And I don't know, Scott, if you want to mention anything else?
I think you covered most everything. I mean, I think that the key is more frequent communication with the public, and each stakeholder in the, in the, you know, aspect of the public requires different levels of communication, and I think that's the intent here, is to get people what they need when they need it, and just provide more of it. And, you know, this also provides an opportunity for departments to really coordinate more, so that, you know, we're, we're ensuring that we're getting the best of the best out there to the public on a more timely basis.
Right, and I think, you know, it's, it's kind of good to sometimes just step, step back and reflect on a lot of these things, and see if there's a way we can improve them. So, so that's that on, I know Erin had to step out, but that was kind of all on the communications side, I don't know if you have any other questions, so, from board members? And to be continued, and we'll update, and hopefully here in the next month, we will be broadcasting live Board of Selectmen meetings, so. All right, so, next item on the agenda is update on beach management and pass system, which Scott Erskine has joined us this morning.
Morning. Just briefly, I have a, have a handout for you to just show you the kind of makeup of how the beach is looking as far as manning the locations, the times, as well as, are put, on the bottom line of the blue, you'll see proposed non-resident fees that we'll have to discuss with the Board of Selectmen at some point, and approve or not, or adjust. And that's our beach index recommendation for this coming summer.
Is that consistent with what was last year, or is it different?
Slightly different. The, the non-resident daily rate last year, well, previous year, not last year, let's not go to last year.
Okay.
Twenty-five dollars, Monday through Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday was forty.
Okay.
So we're increasing, like to increase that up, because of the, all the chatter, making it reasonable, but not exorbitant.
Okay.
To go. We're heavy in the process of recruiting for lifeguards, we have an A-frame sign down on the screen in front of Academy. We're, we also have it on Facebook and Twitter, both on the department side and on the town side. And recruitment, so far, for lifeguards, going very, very well. We are pulling people from a lot of different towns, Essex, Tevere, and Tobe, who's the waterfront manager, is reaching out to all the area swim teams, Yale, Southern High Schools, trying to pull them in. Returning staff are, are putting in their applications, so I'm trying to wait and see who all is coming back, and what my new staffing format's going to need as far as manpower. And we're also developing, in the, years past, we've had a question and answer piece where people, we try to think of all the different scenarios that are asked of us, and we put it, put it down as a question and answer. So we're working on that, and then hopefully that will revolve. Where we're going in the summer, I'm working with Art and Rita, and our, our software provider, Remont Systems, we're putting all our heads together to make it an easy process for online, but it's not going to be right at the beginning for new registrations, that we'll, we're going to work on a rollout throughout the summer. We want to, want to make sure it's tested, and we're all good with it. The system we know, we know, because we've used it for a number of years, so it's not a question of staff not knowing how to operate, how to sell the pass, and we're just working on the web piece.
Have you, if you, did you get the data from Complus in terms of trying to integrate that into our system?
We did, Art and I worked on some reporting that they provide us, and we got it down into an Excel sheet, but there's some difficulties merging it, because some people created new accounts, and those numbers don't correlate with the households that are in RecTrack. So we do have the eighteen, nineteen household data.
Right.
For anybody that bought passes then. It's the new, new people that got them last year, that account number may, is not going to be in RecTrack.
Right, and I was probably one of those people too, I think it was, I just created a new account, so, so there might be a lot of duplication, basically, of that data.
You know, so if people, if we get to that point, it's going to be a communication, you know, to set up your, set up your account on RecTrack, and staff can try to help you through that process.
Okay. Yeah, and I know our goal is obviously to, to offer the ability to buy online, I think that the thought process is to, you know, rather than rolling something out that wouldn't be a hundred percent tested and ready to go, we would, you know, try to do that during the summer as a kind of pilot program, so that you can still get your beach patches in, in May, starting, or actually, April is when we start selling them, or?
Yeah, we will have them in-house by April.
Right, and, and most people buy them probably the day before Memorial Day weekend, pretty much, so recognizing that, they're still going to have to be purchased in person, but over the summer, I think the idea is we'll, we'll, you know, if you're coming in in July, that way you don't have waves of new people trying to try a new system all at once, you know, those, those people in July and August can buy their pass online, and then next year, everybody would be able to do it. And that gives us time to educate people about their accounts, because they do actually have an account with the town right now, so, so there's going to be time to communicate, educate people on the account structure, you know, their accounts, and how to go about doing it, rather than trying to kind of cram it in by May first, so.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Because I'm not sure I'm completely following, so you may need to dumb it down for me. So, you kept using the words new passes, so.
New accounts.
New accounts, so, so if I'm an existing person, I already have an account in the system, so is that making it faster and easier for me to get a pass?
It all depends if last year you, when you got the letter from Complus, if you followed it with your account number, and then you backpadded it, then, and you were able to get your pass, then you would have, you'd still have a RecTrack number.
And then you could get it online, or what does that? Not right now.
Eventually.
Eventually. Because what happened, if you bought, if you bought a pass two years ago, okay, when you bought your beach pass, the beach and rec people created an account for you, so it, you're in the system if you bought it two years ago, and then there's an online ability to renew.
But that's right.
Right, that's our current existing program, and there is an ability to renew through that software program, your account from two years ago, so that you can get your pass again.
But at the door, not at the?
You have to do it at the door right now, because the problem is now that we have to create a process where you pay online, somebody has to mail it to you, there's fees associated with that, so we're not at the point, and Art, you want to talk to that, but where we have that process down. So we would rather have that all ironed out, so that when people start buying them in July, the process is in place. And we also want to make sure people understand that they have an account number, right? Because those people have been verified, and I think that's the other issue, is we've verified that they're a town resident and eligible for a pass, so that verification piece is the other issue, but go ahead, Art.
Just, just to clarify it, as Scott was saying, basically, if, if you purchased your pass for the first time, purchased a beach pass, and it was last year through the Complus system, it will not be in the beach and rec system unless you, all the stars align, and you got your Complus number aligned correctly. And I know that there were some problems with that last year, had to do with leading zeros and the number of digits allowed, and that sort of thing, excuse me, but I think that you won't be able to renew if the situation is that you hadn't had one before, or if you mismatched and didn't get the Complus ID to match your RecTrack ID. So I would really hate to start rolling things out in a hurry, and tell people they can renew online, and then somebody with a beach pass from last year isn't going to be able to do it in many cases. So I think that'll, has to be ironed out, and I'm sure that we can get to a point where it's ironed out, and then as Peggy just said, the verification of your residency is something that some decisions have to be made about, what are we going to accept in that case?
For, yeah.
For residency.
For residency, yeah.
So to do anything online.
Online, versus in person.
Right, so I think, you know, it may, it may be that we choose to, and I won't speak on a turn here, but it's very possible that for your first time ever coming in and buying, getting a beach pass, you may have to come in.
Start your account, and then go forward.
Maybe just renew at some point, maybe just renews at that point, or if you're buying a day pass, and you're going to have like a little call at the surf club.
Because, because now when we do online, obviously, there's a different process, and we do that with programming, so we just have to sort some of this stuff out. But, sorry, any other? Yeah, so for people who, so the bottom line is, you have to go in and buy your pass in person, and what is the hour, what are the hours, and can they, are they still going to have someone there on Saturday?
Yes.
At the surf club, so if someone is working?
Beginning, beginning part of May, we will have the surf club office manned seven days a week, eight to five.
I'm still not clear, is there a difference in the documentation requirements going forward for people who are in the system? Do they still have to produce the same level of documentation?
No, because they're already verified.
They're already verified, so once they're in the system, that was, and that's something we have to talk about, because, you know, and then how do you handle people that aren't in the system?
Yeah.
And managing them giving you information online, so right now, we want people to come in, set up an account, and then the renewals could be done online. So it's questions we have to have, because part of me is like, we require a lot of documentation when the reality is, do we really need some of it? And I think we kind of have had some debates internally about what's the point, you know, you're using a credit card with a Madison address, it, you know, you can get a beach pass if you lease, you can, even if you're just a temporary resident, if you're renting for the summer, and you bring in a contract. So there's all these different ways you can prove your ability to get a beach pass, so, for seasonally. So we have to kind of vet through all that, and figure out what we're going to allow online, and what we're not going to allow online. You know, it's, 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 I know it sounds like it was simple, but as we're learning, we need to make sure we have this all correctly addressed.
But it sounds like, just to be simple and clear, it sounds like the fallback strategy is, you can come into the office, you can go to the surf club seven days a week, and get your pass, regardless of any of this computer nonsense.
Right, and, and this is more, that's why we want, we want to use this summer to figure it out, and maybe have a pilot program, where we're not having thousands of people getting beach passes, but maybe only a couple. but maybe only a couple hundred.
Yeah.
And then we can make sure that the system is working right and the verification is done correctly and the payment is being processed appropriately. And the sticker is getting mailed, because now we have a physical sticker that we have to mail to people.
Yep.
So we're getting there and I do wanna offer up to the public some sort of public information session on what summer 2020 will look like. I'd hope to do it, I think, before our next meeting, but then we realized there was a conflict. So I'll, I'll get out another date that we were gonna be offering that to the public. Lauren, is that correct? Because we have a budget thing now, at the time we were gonna have a public information session, so. And that will be just on beach pass, summer 2020 staffing and beach passes. And we'll, we'll just, it's more of an opportunity for the public to ask questions and understand. And we'll have slides laying out all the facts for, for the public. So that will be set at a different time now, okay? Because I, I didn't let you know that, we're not doing it on the 24th, so I have a conflict. Any other questions? For Scott? No?
Please, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Appreciate it. All right, the next item is just a formality that we have to do for the budget public hearing. So can I have a motion to discuss?
Do we need to read it, Lauren?
Sure.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to discuss and take action to call a budget hearing on Wednesday, March 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Auditorium of Walter C. Paulson Middle School for the purpose of budget presentation, Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education budgets conducted by the Board of Finance in accordance with Town Charter 10.5A.
Second.
Okay, discussion. This is just a requirement, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right. Number 12. Discuss and take action to accept a donation from Neighbor to Neighbor, the Madison Needs and Family Services Department, the amount of $10,000 to be used for individuals and families in need of emergency financial assistance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, great. And my understanding, this is an annual thing that happens, which is a wonderful thing that the town gets from the Neighbor, the Neighbor, which is part of the Madison Foundation. It's one of their funds.
Do you wanna come, do you wanna talk about it at all?
Uh, sure.
We have, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were here to talk about this, please.
So this is something that we get, it's not, it depends on how often we get it, based on how much we use it. But it's a great discretionary fund that we have at our disposal for helping our social service clients that come in that have bigger needs, even beyond just like, we need to get them a tank of oil pretty quickly. So it's done amazing things, we thank Neighbor, they've shown generosity in getting the money to us. And it really, for some people, is a matter of keeping them in their homes and keeping them going. So, you know, we, we thank them and all that they do throughout the year. They help with a bunch of other programs like Christmas trees during the holidays as well.
Yeah, that's great. No, it's, it's important and people do, this is helping families in emergency situations in need, so we appreciate it. Any other questions? So I guess with gratitude, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you very much, thanks. Number 13, discuss and take action to appoint the following members to the Ad-Hoc Government Study Committee. And I will read the names. Helen Berlin, so this is Government Study Committee. Helen Berlin, Jeanne Ferris, Lauren Noble, Bob Polito as Chair, Bob Reinhardt, Peter Ruse, and Leo White. Motion to discuss, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Our agenda has, Peter is Chair, is that?
Do you have the one from today?
I think he declined, I think he declined.
Do you have the one from today?
He wanted it.
Oh, okay, the draft I got.
Changed.
Had Peter, okay.
All right, the hard copy should, should, I don't even think I printed the one that said Peter next.
No, the hard copy in our package.
I think that was just the draft.
Yeah, yeah.
You leave the draft.
Yeah, it was changed.
That's the one that goes into my iPad.
Keep up.
Oh, because you're paperless.
He's the only one that ever gets paper.
Any discussion, I know that I would just wanna commend the Al and Aaron, right? Interviewed many people, 19?
We were 19.
No, they were 19. Oh, you, you were 19, how many? Fifteen, still, a very commendable. Our interviews were 12. Yeah.
Is that one of these, you just do this?
So, but I, it was obviously, we're appreciative to all the citizens who put forward applications and, you know, there's gonna be more opportunities to serve the town. And so I think the, you know, Al and Aaron recommended us for much difficult deliberation about putting forward these names. So any more questions or discussion?
No, I, I just wanna say that I was really impressed and pleased with the, the response that we got for these because it, it just showed that people are really wanting to step up and get involved and I thought that was great, so.
And new names and new, and different faces, which was great, so, yeah.
That's great. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Peggy, before we leave this, Aaron and I have one more recommendation. There's another name that we wanted to bring forward, not as a member, not as a voting member of this committee, but somebody we thought would be a tremendous help in helping this committee with its deliberations. Of course, I'm referring to Gus Horvath, who frequently is sitting in this chair giving us advice about the structure of town government. Gus has been playing a role in this town government for probably 50 years. And we thought that, I don't think we need a formal action this morning, but we thought that we should ask Gus to serve as an historical advisor to this Government Studies Committee. Someone they could look to, to draw on for information about what's happened in the past. And so I'm not looking for any formal action this morning, but just an acknowledgement.
Yeah, it's fine.
I, I think it's a great idea. I know Gus has been really helpful to me in terms of giving me a lot of the background and history of.
To all of us.
Yeah, many things that have come to my attention since taking office, so I totally support. And I think he'll be a great resource for the committee.
Thank you.
All right, number 14, discuss and take action to appoint the following members to the Ad hoc Island Avenue Future Use Committee. Read the names, Rich Bonanzio, I apologize, is that right?
Bonanzio.
Bonanzio? I've never said your last name, so I apologize.
It's the one guy that's here.
I know, I gotta look over there, I'm gonna get it all messed up. Jason Brown, Phil Chamberlain, Graham Curtis as Chair, Athena Nomicos, Joe Paradiso, and Barbara Redstek.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Once again, many applicants, 19?
Yeah, we had 19, so Bruce and I only did 15 minutes apiece, you're right. But actually, some actually went a little long to 20 minutes, so. But we had a great turnout, you know, great faces. I think the folks that didn't get selected, Bruce and I made sort of personal notes that they will be on our hit list for future committees.
We recorded phone numbers and addresses.
Indeed, indeed, so we got, I just, it was a great group of people, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, it's great to hear and record and, and so I guess all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much and congratulations to committee members and appreciate it.
So they will need to get sworn in, is that how it works? So we need to?
Uh, yeah, they have to get, yep, yeah, actually.
Both committees will get an email from me in about an hour that says, here is everything you need to know in order to officially start your committee, including how they need to be sworn in by the town clerk.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, number 15. Okay, long one to read. Discuss and take action to approve awarding the bid for the replacement of the Brown School wood gym floor to Kenville Floor Company, 12810 Broad Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, with the following funding, base bid of $188,019 plus bid options number two, additional $3,773 for bid option number three, additional $49,313 for bid option number four, additional $5,013 if needed, bid option number five, schedule of unit for hazardous material abatement as noted A3J, $10.50 per containment, $12.30 per square foot, $4.00 per linear foot, and $10.50 for bag as outlined in the bid. So, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, Bill McMan is here to tell us all about this very long.
Sorry about the detail. This is a summer project, it's school, very tight. It's very important that we get it done and finished within the timeframe. So we put every contingency that we could think of. So these are all optional things, once we tear up the floor, if things happen, we know what the costs are. And you'll notice that the low, the lower bidder was about $7,000 cheaper, but he didn't put all those options in. We do not wanna have to stop the project and figure out costs. We wanna know what all the costs are ahead of time, if those options come and we thought of them all and we put them all in there.
Nice.
So.
And, and the origins of needing to replace the gym, if you could just.
Yes, no problem. So this summer, we had a construction project at the school. We designed a sophisticated drainage system and we tied it in. What we didn't realize is the underground piping, which was, you know, big pipes, had failed. No one would know that. So when we put the drainage in and it rained and the piping failed, it flooded the school. And the damage of the water in the gym caused the floor to buckle. You know, we had insurance, insurance is gonna cover it. It was definitely an unforeseen problem that you would never know. You just wouldn't think pipes on the ground would fail, you tied into them. You know, we did a lot of research, we fixed the drainage, of course. And the floor did not really look problematic because we cleaned it right up within 24 hours. The water got under the wood floor and over time, it just buckled the floor. There's nothing we could do about it. So that's part of the reasons we have all those moisture options, depending on how wet the floor is, what we're gonna do.
And most importantly, insurance is covering this.
Insurance is covering it.
It's a beautiful thing.
And they've been involved ever, you know, from day one. You know, we cleaned it up within, you know, autumn, you know, right away. And I thought the floor was gonna be okay. And just over time, it buckled, there's nothing you could do.
So has it not been usable since?
No, it's usable, but it's just not acceptable. It's not, not flat, you know, it's got little ripples, you could bounce the ball, it's not perfect, but it's safe. There's no gaps, there's no danger. But, you know, if you've ever been on a wood floor that's buckled, you know, you walk on it, it's buckled. You know, that's not really an acceptable gym floor for one of our facilities. Safe, but usable, but.
Yeah, especially when kids are running around and you don't trip hazards and all that.
Yeah, I don't think it's a trip hazard, it's just not right, it's, it's a little buckled.
Okay, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And the next one is number 16, discuss and take action to approve awarding the bid for the renovation of the Madison Police Station to Munger Construction, 750 East Main Road, Meaton Street, Suite 1, Grand Park. With the following funding, base bid of $58,115 plus bid options number one, additional $1,550 if needed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and this, if you could also give a project overview and kind of the origins of this project?
No problem. So, you know, the police have been in the building since 2000. They've had additional equipment needed for their detective department. They obtained the equipment and will fit in room. So we had to modify the room and at the same time modifying the room, we're gonna, you know, modify the room for today's standards. So this is approved by the CIP, went through the budget process last year. The funding was in place July 1st. I put the plans together, I bid it out. Munger Construction has done a lot of work for us, very successful company. I'm, you know, very happy that they bid it and, and the price is within our budget. And I believe and I know that it will come in on time and be a successful project.
Billy, did the other folks you solicited submit a bid?
No, I solicited from four other contractors and I don't know why they didn't do it because it's actually, my technique now is to do about 80% design and then say, it's a design build, you need to finish the last 20%, it's up to you to finish the plan, turnkey. I've been pretty successful with that, we've done that with a lot of boiler projects because the plans don't meet exactly, then there's extras and costs. I'm like, no, here's the basic plan, it's a design build, you figure it out, turnkey, how much is it gonna cost? We put a couple options in that we might wanna do, but it's been very successful. I think that scared a few of the contractors away. We've had other contractors we solicited, I was hoping to get other bids, but we did not. But Munger's solid and, you know, we've used them before, you know, I think they're a very good company.
What other projects did they do in town?
They did the addition to the town garage and they did the renovation to the dispatch center, which was very sophisticated. The dispatch center was a lot of money and a lot of hya and stuff, so they're very familiar. You know, we were temporarily moving the detectives into another area that we have already set up because that's where the dispatch was, so they're very familiar with the building. So those are just two. They do other minor maintenance and repairs for us as well.
Okay, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks a lot, I appreciate it. Appreciate it, okay. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action to approve moving Tony West from bicycle member to bicycle member alternate to regular member for a term to expire January 1st, 2024. I think this was a result of one of the ad hoc committee members who chose not to move forward, was that right?
Jason Engelhardt.
Yeah, Jason Engelhardt chose not to be appointed permanently, left of the vacancies. This is one of the existing alternates that's been resolved to regular member.
Right, which is kind of protocol typically, with the alternates move up when there's a vacancy, so.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, great, all right, thank you. Oh, no, we got it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, tax abatements?
I'll make a motion to refund $11,022.91.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Citizen comments? Yes, Bill, and then who's second?
Bill Stabelford, Chair of the Academy Committee. Earlier in today's meeting, some of you made reference to potentially available grants to renovate the academy building, should, should have passed a referendum. And I can offer your perspective on what kind of grants are available and the timing in relation to a referendum. The catch is with both state historic preservation, tax credits, and grants that even to apply for these grants requires some highly specialized knowledge, which the town will have to pay for, these are professionals who work in this area. For example, in order to apply for the state historic preservation tax credit, with the application must be submitted 40% of the architect's working, building, working plan, not just the conceptual plan, which we have now. But the architect would have to submit 40% of his or her actual architectural building plan. The town will also have to hire an historic, historic, an architectural historian. And we have, we have proposals for that in the range of $15,000 to $30,000 for a person to consult. Without these specialists, Dick Pissar and I have met in Hartford with the State Historic Preservation Office. Without hiring these specialists, the, the likelihood of these grants being approved is very low. Similarly, with a Brownfield application, a Brownfield grant for hazmat abatement, we would have to have specialists come in and, and evaluate the hazardous material and what it would cost to remove it. So there are many grants available and they will absolutely be worthwhile applying for in terms of the potential payout. The state historic preservation grant could go up to 2.5, that's a B, a tax credit, $2.5 million. But we have to spend some upfront money, which probably is very unrealistic prior to a referendum. Even though they will, SHPO will accept an application prior to a referendum, it would require some upfront dollars.
Mr. Justin Murphy?
Justin Murphy from 44 Winbrook Lane. Just a very small suggestion with regard to public input or comments to the board. Would, would it make sense on the selectman's page on town to have like a link that is some, that would populate an email to the entire board, rather than Lauren? I, I believe now people will email Lauren and show forward it. Maybe that's intentional, but I just thought a tiny step that would make it easier for people to reach out with comments to the, to the entire board, you know, like a link that would.
To go to everybody, yeah. Well, everybody's email addresses are on the webpage.
Right, but you gotta do it individually.
It's kind of a pain, I, I agree, that's a great idea.
Just a tiny.
Yeah, I agree, because I've had to do that before in the past and you gotta, I copy and paste.
Look at you text app back there, making it happen.
Any more citizens' comments? Great, okay. Moving on now, I guess we're gonna, I need a motion to move into executive session and invite Lauren Reins to join us.
So there's some.
So moved.
Yes.
So there's some maintenance issues that I wanted to clarify and I don't know if you want me to be involved in that as well?
I think you should be. I was going to ask that.
That's fine. Yeah, we can include Bill.
Invite Bill McMinn and Lauren into executive session. We'll keep you for part of the discussion. That would be very helpful.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So apologize, we're going to be going into executive session now.